Last week or last meeting.
Did you see that? I can't believe it. It's been a few days. Please.
Just, we just, I think the time. And no. Did it be designed this weekend? Practice. It was, it was, it was a long day today and it's got to come out. We're here every year.
I'll get all the paperwork and stuff. I think it's all in that section.
Yes. Do we have seconds? All the paper?
Yeah, actually, I just, I don't know if this is not really a big deal, but it just says that like the two, um, these changes are requested for two reasons. And it seems like maybe just gives one. Maybe I'm not reading very well.
On that follow-up, where you're actually looking at?
Oh, sorry, under, um, Mason Farm. No, the first paragraph.
It was the flexibility was one and consistency of the setbacks was the other.
Okay.
How he said. I could state that differently.
No, it's okay.
Sounds acceptable to me. Yeah, one more time. Phil, yes.
I just have a comment or a question pertaining to Mount Miller. I had missed the majority of those meetings that we held pertaining to those because of illness. And I was, I was hoping that, given when they're, I hear two things. Just in talking at the board meeting that I did then, last week when we signed the papers, that the numbers that they gave you in terms of trucks per day is maybe two to three or something?
They have four trucks running max, and usually running two. And it's a two-hour round trip, so it's pretty limited on the amounts that they're really doing, but...
Are they doing any retail besides their?
When we originally talked, they said, "No, it's just them and that's it." But when they came back, because the very next day I'd gotten a call from one of the road commissioners wanting to buy some clay fill for a horseback or something like that. You know, it was my interpretation from what they told the public is they weren't selling anything. But when they came back, they talked to the board and it's by appointment only, basically, is how I took it. So I was fine with them delivering, but when they came back, talked to the board, the board was fine with them doing small amount of on-call stuff. It's not open for a public to walk in, but it was on-call is how the board accepted it.
I, um, I just had a concern about the, my impression was that a business of that nature, you know, where they're, where they're, that, uh, a bulk plant to make a quick rebuild, that it could conceivably generate quite a bit of traffic. But, um, I'm just hoping that we don't have any jurisdiction on that because it is a state road, but that we will keep in mind that there are a number of residences in-acting on that Egress path.
Yeah, they would be two houses in-acting and then they'd be into New Hampshire. Uh, and one of them's a rental and the other one would be, it was prior avoid member. So if there's issues going by, choose at the public hearing. I'm sure she would voice her concerns with us and then we can talk to them. So they seem fairly open for, if I have an issue, they're right on to it the next day.
Good. I did just, was looking through some old papers that pertain to, um...
Prior on it.
The back position.
Turn.
Turn. Um, and, uh, Mr. Stephens, I'm trying to remember his first name.
Richard?
Richard.
No, it was Richard.
Oh, Mark, from the DEP?
No, no, Stephens, the popular, uh, one or two doors up by, uh, Lubritro. Is he turning on to, uh...
Right.
John, John Stephens. He had gotten some material for us when we were reviewing, of DOT pertaining to their rules and regs. And there's a, there's a larger site distance and a lower speed limit triggered when you get into some, you know, larger numbers. And I just thought we ought to keep that in mind on behalf of the people downstream of that place. I mean, we can, it is, it is the right of the applicant to come in and, you know, ask for an amendment. I would assume the board is certainly within its rights to do the same thing if conditions...
Good with that?
Yeah.
All right. If we move into new business, we have these best possible locations. I'm not sure which group this is and three that are...
Just in the order they have, it's pretty easy to have.
Some that they all want to start with who's here?
There. Oh, there. He says we're easy, bud.
Gotcha, gotcha. You've been here so much, I can't remember the board.
Yeah, I used to be over in Chapeli. Now I might just be...
May actually correct your case.
All right, so you've got some statues. I'll hand them off quickly here and then pull you in. You've got one. Did it change from the one I got? So what we've got here is, um, I guess I don't know what the official term is going to be. If it's a, after the fact, best possible location or applying for support under the structure as it states on the agenda. But briefly, you know, my understanding of it, coming in a little bit late in the process here, but done a considerable amount of survey work up here since I was contacted, is, um, is basically the pages here did some work on their, on the structure of the property, which included having the building lifted up to repair some, some sills and some supports underneath it. I think Ken maybe has some pictures and I have a few pictures. Basically, the building had rotten sills and was sitting on concrete blocks. Those click after pictures, I can show you what the supports look like underneath it before. These concrete blocks it was sitting on, they lifted it up, repaired the sill and then set it back down on these timbers rather than concrete blocks. They did come and speak with Ken at one point and did pull a permit for some of the activity here, but it sounds like there was a bit of misunderstanding. They thought this work for their discussions may have been covered, whereas I think, I think Ken's belief was that the permit was primarily to remove some concrete from the property. And, um, you know, maybe he understood that some of the supports, you know, maybe shored up and didn't realize it was going to be quite this amount of a project. And certainly correct me if I'm misspeaking, Ken, but, you know, so what we're left with is, um, the building which is situated in the same location, hasn't been raised or lowered in any fashion either. It's in the same elevation, same location, but I think, you know, Ken, because there's these new supports under the building and there are some concrete blocks that are newer, larger gen S blocks that are under these supports to support him, I think he felt that it was a good idea for us to come and make sure, you know, it was all reported to you and that you didn't, you know, maybe want to see any changes to what had happened. Yep.
I see the tree, I assume the tree beams, but they're sitting right, I assume there's a saw and a tool for it, but why are they sitting right on, why are they exposed to dirt?
Uh, why is the dirt...
Because we keep three, four inches apart with cement.
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily know the answer to that.
The method they use means that they'll go...
You dive the main roof, you keep it as long as it's nice showing, to keep it away from the dirt.
No, it's a treated wood and they put a two-by-two precast footing underneath it and secured it to that, so that's all fine.
But I, yeah, I get what you're saying. I just told them...
It's certainly the owner's got a rock out.
Certain dirt back, it will certainly maybe prevent some rotting there.
So essentially, when you were there before and then after, there doesn't appear to be anything structurally changed? Just repair?
Yeah. Uh, the original permit was for removing the patio on the back side and they thought there was some rot on the back. And it's really easy as a new homeowner for the renovation snowball to stop. And they had a company command insurer of the whole thing in front and when you live in within the resources, there's a lot more regulation than you're used to when you're not used to living within the resources. So, um, it triggers best practical location because this consists of a foundation, the puddings underneath do. Luckily enough, there really isn't much room to move it. We've got the septic design that sets 10 feet off from the street, which is the minimum setback for a side. If there is an issue, they could ask for a variance and bring it down to five feet, but I'm comfortable that the building is in the best practical location.
Actually, I didn't think of that. I do have copies of that septic design that Mark drew in here.
I sent on one way.
Okay, so people do have copies of it.
So the deck is shown on this drawing you passed out, that that's the current size?
Yes, so everything is...
The deck has always been, or...
And I think maybe they can speak to that. And everything appeared, nothing appeared new to me. I hadn't been on the site until maybe a week ago after a lot of this had happened. I located what I, what I saw there, but it was just looking at, at grade and the supports and things there. I personally don't believe anything had been added, any new construction. Even the front of the building, I would've looked at it to see when they set it back down relative to this concrete patio, did it look like they raised it, lowered it, anything? And everything appeared to be in an original position to me, but I can't certify what was there. You know, I'm not the two of nobody. There are a bunch of pictures floating around, including the ones Ken has and the ones that I have. If anything, it would be helpful to look at.
It looks like a pretty small deck, just serves as pretty much access out the door down to the...
Right, I, I don't even know the measurement on top of my head, but three feet...
The cement patio up front?
No, the little overhanging deck by the slider on the front.
Yeah, that was there.
Yeah, I have to take that off. Prior to them purchasing it, they came in and checked and we noticed that was non-premated and they were aware that it would have to be removed. They could keep the door, just put a gadrail in front of it and just give it a violation.
Oh, so this little deck has picture here, that's a picture, correct. That would settle back a little bit from the, yeah.
It looks like the thick side is going all the way back down to the house. On the, on the...
Yes, my dimension does go from...
When we have for, um, I guess I'm having a hard time, the lake is on the back in this picture. This is the lake right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that's from the road.
So, is that here? Am I now looking at the side that is facing the water?
Uh, no, you're looking in this direction here, you know, there's a V in the building.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You're looking from the front yard.
So what pitch of the roof is it that's heading toward the water? The backside of this?
Yes, now let's see. So this, this peak right here, here is the far peak here. This extension coming this way is heading towards this gentleman looking at it from the water. This is from the water, so this would almost be sitting like this relative to your picture there. So that peak is the opposite of that peak in the mirror in that way. So that's the little deck on the front that they're talking about right there.
That's disappearing.
Joe, what is the slope like to the water then?
What is the water?
Show some steps, show some steps there, but we don't have a pictorial...
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't prepare site topography for it. It, you know, my estimation, and this is, this is rough, I'd say 12 to 15 feet down to the water from the, from the top of these steps down to the water. It's not as steep as like a Melsom Lake Lodge or something like that for sure.
Kenny, is there some revegetation proposed next?
They're not relocating it. I believe they're under the 20%. They're not doing any area expansions. Um, so they're not, they wouldn't trigger the regulations to require it. Usually as a new homeowner, the first thing they usually like to do, homeowners do, is rake and cause and cut and do that type of stuff. So I think in this case here, it's just maintaining as is.
What is the current condition of the stuff down and what are they made of?
Um, yeah, they were wood of some sort. I think they're perstrated steps, yeah.
And they're good condition or?
Yeah.
If you don't plan on doing anything with them at the time?
No.
Yeah. And it's, it looks like there's about a dozen steps in this drawing, is that accurate?
Uh, it's kind of like a ramp to like eight, eight or 10.
Okay, yeah, I see the little, like, lady with the top on.
Yeah.
There we go, that gives us a little bit of view of the slope there.
Given that, what Kenny says, we can't, we can't ask you to do a little revegetation there, but as a good neighbor policy, would you take that?
We gladly will, yeah.
You know what I mean, just to keep sediment from washing into the...
Yeah.
And then this photo was taken before or after the work?
That one is before.
So does that mean all four of these trees in the picture are still currently there?
Correct. The ones that were closest, well, I guess they won't have those ones on that steps. It wasn't, but yes, I, they definitely were there. There hasn't been any, there wasn't any tree cutting relative to that work, is that... There's been no tree removal, no real vegetation removal or anything like that. Only going to get removed is the deck and maybe the patio somehow. Yeah, I think one of the notes in, I think one of the notes in the, in the septic design somewhere there was at the time of install for that, that concrete patio would be removed, um, between the driveway and the building.
So right now it's a quartz slab patio?
Yeah.
Proposed to be something else?
Um, what?
Just proposed to be...
We've been at time because I'm not sure what they proposed to replace it with. I think they'd work it out with Ken, I haven't heard the plan.
Yeah, just grass it in or whatever we're supposed to do.
We, yeah, we had to talk to Ken. We, we originally thought we had to remove it because we thought it pitched water into the house, but the slums are actually that far above the tar driveway, so the water kind of goes around it.
Well, that would be good time to ask him to revegetate for sure.
Yeah, we can say all that.
You going to take this stuff for chambers in?
I don't know, sir.
Yes, that's, that's what the design was anyway. Mark had put something in there that you guys could drive on for a chamber system, so... Which is, I think every one of these lake lots these days is, has the same thing, some sort of chamber.
Any other comments?
I will wait. Except, uh, any condition?
Seconds? Any other comments?
Um, we could sort of, it looks like a basketball cage, we broke a couple of foot on it, like, conditions, if you will, just that this deck is removed, right?
I think he said it is already.
I haven't, part of it is?
Yeah. I've started tearing it down, but it got cold.
It's coming down.
The deck on the link side.
And we'll put that into the building permit when they, the permit's granted to do the crating and stuff. We'll add remove the deck.
And just when they, when they expect to deal with the concrete patio that they'll revegetate, giving that plan?
Yeah, they already have a permit for that and that's what they were talking about.
Joe, what is this? Under here.
Oh, that's, I don't know the terminology. It's just some sort of board that's kind of, it's, it's not concrete, that was my first question. It's blocking the concrete blocks that were holding the building up almost equally and snowballed itself.
That's what board.
Yeah, the first question when I saw that picture.
It's a trench, I don't know.
And maybe what they call a mudsill here.
Yeah, that's in there, yeah.
Okay, my bad, cut.
I believe you. Adding into the...
Have you read some of the old times, have you read some of that?
It's almost like...
Too much.
Both the muds and slime right around.
I'm going to add to this.
So we got to change the motion?
He's just adding. No, just another condition.
If you tell the drip line trenches installed around the perimeter of about 18 inches, question.
All right, any, any other comments, questions? All of you there? All closed, zero, I'll pass.
Thank you very much.
Please one time.
I think that should be the hardest one of the night. I guess I have a, a may on, probably. The septic design out there.
These are yours.
If you're doing that one next, I... I'm not here to represent this project, but I did this sketch, so I can hand the mouse, though. The next one.
Yeah, yeah, we'll jump it out.
I just look here in the building to give dimensions. I know Ken knows more than I do, so... I didn't have time to measure it, but when I came through up there, um, you know, I got this pretty last minute as far as putting in the sketch of where this building's at. I think this is some sort of best possible location, application, and there's, behind this building there's a retaining wall, a very steep slope that goes up to the next landing. They have another building on the property. Believe me, I'm exhausted from treading up and down that hill quickly already.
Jess and Wesley.
Uh, from the...
From the lunch?
From the road, um, 125 or so? But it's straight downhill right along. Thank you.
So, so the existing house is going to be that down?
That's correct.
They hope to do.
Yeah, you got photos coming for that.
Okay.
What kind of building do they have up above, Kenny, is it a garage, house, or general house?
They just, if you can...
I'm just saying roughly.
How big's the lot? It sure says here somewhere.
That's it.
That was, yeah, that was the only thing that you see. 1.1 acres.
Do you think they're going to expand their other buildings strategically?
This one here?
It's not the other one.
Um, I think the other one's down in the 100-foot zone.
You're talking two separate septics for the two houses?
Correct.
How did they, um...
So we could just ask them to make a, put an addition on the rest of the house.
How do you happen to have two residences in the same room?
Been there forever.
Two different families own it?
No, I don't think so. Same person owns it.
Same person. So, so what is, on this, on this map that I'm looking at right here, where was the original house?
It's way behind, let me send you that.
So are they going to knock this down and rebuild the building?
Correct. And essentially the house is kind of where it is right now?
There's, if you look at the photos, there's one behind the house and it's a foot or two, and it's straight right up. So there's a couple of feet to move it. The house currently is 40 feet deep. So the only real way to gain anything is to turn the other house and run it perpendicular to, and parallel with the shoreline versus what they've got now. So 26 would be the new house in, in depth.
So, so wait, wait, what I'm looking at is what's there now?
Correct.
I'm not looking at a plan for what they want to do.
Correct. He didn't overlay the other one on top of that.
Got it, got it, got it.
That may explain it a little bit better.
Ken, is the plan to turn the ridge perpendicular to the water? The new ridge?
Yes. That's the only way to gain any setback. So currently, it looks like it's six inches into the lake.
Yeah.
And proposed would be 14 feet away from the lake. I think maybe we can get 16, 17 feet when they go to dig, but I think if we worked with the 14-foot number or as best as they'll work with me to, to get it back a little bit, that way there, that should cover, you use all the hens and things like that.
Is there room to put this one on top of the other one?
You could look at that, it's a double decker.
So is there an increase in size of the proposal?
Doesn't last 30%.
All right, and on this, so they see that in that little diagram, it looks like it's about the...
Same.
Yeah.
This, this is showing the ridge going parallel to the shoreline. This, uh, sketch here from, I don't know if this is from Joe, no, this is a tax man.
Correct, that was from the applicant.
But it shows the long access to the building parallel to the shoreline. And on Joe's plan, we would be led to believe it's...
Correct, so Joe's is existing.
Oh, okay, all right. But they, you're saying the ridgeline is still going to be perpendicular to the shoreline?
No, it'd be parallel with it. It's going to have a gable on that end too, as it's proposed now. But the only way to get this further away from the water is to turn the building, basically rotate it, stuff it back in the bank as far as practical. And drip line trenches and vegetate the 14 feet.
Throw. I'm going to need a big fireball or something.
Or garters or anything.
If you want to go with 14, we've got an open deck and then an enclosed porch that adds up to 20 right there.
Correct.
So they're going to ask them to make it a little bit wider and a little bit taller and not, not go where the deck and porch where they could be 20 feet from the water.
Mike, let me just set that up, this is not what you were getting at.
A little bit taller to get a better view, really.
The retaining wall's got the, of partial foundation pushed right back.
That rear retaining wall?
Yeah.
I think there's two or three feet we could gain into there.
I'm talking about where the wall is now. Go right over the wall, say like 10 feet.
Rip it all right out. If you...
Or just pour another wall and make partial foundation.
The foundation would be the retaining wall, but I think if you went three or four feet past that retaining wall, you'd be talking a 12, 13, 14-foot high foundation right off of that. I mean, the hills, you would see it in some of those photos.
Yeah, some of the places on the small pond.
It's almost as bad as Vegas.
Yeah, yeah.
So is it pretty flat over here?
Yeah, it is, it should go down in there, it's a little flat area. It's going to try and kind of comes down over to it.
Right, it looks like, as you were picturing, you have to, you know, like, to rain... Right, it looks like, as you were picturing, you have to, you know, make that the rain here inside. Looks like that would be the way they'd wanna expand their building, but haven't really been doing it kind of.
Yes.
Well, they would with an eight foot closed porch. How, we're too sorry, huh? You would eliminate the deck in the front?
And that is being eliminated. The pose, there'd be no decks on the front or anything like that. Be an enclosed porch, basically, into that house. Yeah, no decks on the front.
Well, they could put, they could put the porch on the, on the end of the thing. You'd still be able to look out from the lake. Instead of having on the lake side, you'd get less, less water. I mean, pretty close, you know, when you dig, you know, water right on your deck. If it was on the end, it's still difficult to look out on the front.
What do you wanna say, walk through this one?
We'll do ice skates, right? Go for the pond side.
I used the.
How itchy are they to get going?
Um.
Could be too itchy, right? I don't think it'll do much.
Yeah. They're getting down in there. It's gotta be dry and clean, that's true.
So plenty of time to take a look at it, huh?
What does it look like above?
Uh, it's a hill that goes down into the house and then there's a older driveway. So it could have been two blocks at one time, how it's set up, and somebody's bought it, merged it together maybe, I don't know.
If you look on the top, there's no real impact. It's, it's well past the hundred foot, you think?
At least a hundred anyway, so.
You can see how much room you have on this right here inside.
It's odd enough to make it, tough to make a decision without taking a peek.
You went down there.
Yeah.
It really comes down to how wide do you think a reasonable house is? They're at twenty-six feet. It's a very different.
The final fact is that this dimension's four or six feet.
The existing one?
What's that dimension?
Probably similar, really close.
You don't want it to be too narrow on them, but.
Four, two, six, they give you two, twelve foot rooms.
Right. The problem is it's just a stairs. I don't see any of it proposed in the drawing.
It could be gonna do similar to ours, two stairway, look at you running from the lake.
Yeah.
You could go right up the stairs.
Yeah.
It depends with them, they already have the design with everything and everything.
Just sketches, so they don't know what.
Whether they like to sketch or not.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, you wanna set up a time to take a look or you'd rather make a decision tonight? Everybody's call here.
What's to, what would we see? Would, can someone explain to me what, what we would learn further from the site law?
I'm curious, when you're facing this drawing, Tom, and you know, on the radiant side, would they have more room to expand it, what the, what it looks like?
You didn't have time to get those printed today?
You know, how much room they have to expand in that direction to compensate for moving this back from the lake. Oh, I see what you're saying. Looks like most of the trees are on the lefty inside, right?
Correct, yeah.
So there's no trees over there, according to this, maybe a few trees, according to this.
Right next to it, Kyle Davis did a house about fifteen years ago up there for the president from SIS.
Oh, that's a good picture.
It's really, and when you take the photos, it's really hard to, to get a sense of the slope.
When you get down to that lower level, the slope is fairly.
It's a nice picture.
This really shows the garden, it's like down and then it flattens over there right before the wing part.
That's what we have time to get those up.
So, so are we looking at the second house under property?
Correct, yeah.
Time's up.
He was making wishes. I'm choosing my gig at mine.
This is the building they turned down. Here's the house. And then here's the second. That's a big house.
I mean, it looks to me like you could get twenty feet back without even moving the back slum thing.
Well, it's not hard to tell.
That's what it comes down to, what's reasonable for a depth of a house.
And so you're saying this.
Is there a few.
Twenty feet's not reasonable.
That line there?
Yeah.
Two ten foot walls minus the exterior walls, minus the interior wall.
Do they let the ninth foot rule?
Yeah. What you see those on plans all the time, nine foot, six foot, two here, which to that.
They made it together because of.
Yeah, yeah.
Ran from the back to the side to side. You know, your room would be front, your wall would be central, you'd have, you know, so your room, you could see all the way to the lake from the, you know, the backs, back of house from like that.
Yeah.
I mean, that was work. I mean, it wouldn't make the room, you know.
You still need a hallway to get to them.
I see very big work.
I, I would say, me, but he always.
Yes, the hallway, all four doors.
All bedrooms, yeah.
But then for bedroom, it was like, you know, hands off, we have the children, so they left the hall. I guess we would, we couldn't, that's all we had, that was simple, that's just ours. That also is only twenty-five by thirty-seven, which is art. I guess they built it whatever size it was. You know, on that side over there, it certainly looks like a pretty good slope. I mean, I guess you could, if you were gonna force the issue and move the house over that way, you could probably take that slope out, but, you know, you look at a picture like that one, I probably can't see it from there, but.
Right.
It, it seems a drop off. And when you go over that office, it's gonna affect the land next door.
And can they get, can they get a machine down there?
There's a driveway that goes right down to it, but it, it's small equipment, I would think.
And, and the driveways over here?
Yeah.
Because there's not much room on the other side. Get the guy next door to me, Ken, he's, he's very good at that call. He's just, he's practiced, he's digging holes.
He's digging.
No. Let's cite disturbance if you just wanna do it.
Turn it around where it is?
Yeah.
Up to you guys.
Hard to tell with that picture without seeing the top and graphic lines on the map, exactly how the pond looks like, if it goes toward the shore there or if it stays parallel to the orange line on this map, you know, if it stays continuously that or if it goes toward the shore, you can't help in that photo.
Yeah.
There's only two feet from the bank is where they're sitting, so.
You look at the map here, the, the lot, why come he was trying to other way?
That's what we're saying.
You know, we'll go twenty-four feet or twenty-five feet. We would still bring it back and go to, come, no, not to six feet, but won't one.
That's what he's saying.
So it's like, the pulse of this basically is to rip this down and spin the new one.
Okay, so with those pictures, I can't.
Yeah.
It's that, another little piece that had, you know, the, the little bit of a map that had them turned.
For this one here?
That one, this seat.
Yeah, okay, all right, yeah, now I see it.
So instead of forty feet from the lake to the back of the house, it'd be twenty-six, fourteen feet of vegetated buffer, which I think we could get to fifteen or sixteen. But until they got in there and working, it'd be, it's hard to tell. That's with the twenty-six foot wide camp.
Twenty-six feet, we do this, we do twelve foot rooms.
What, what option would create less site disturbance in the project?
I think where it is, if we slid it over to the other side, you'd also have the camp looking down on the roof of the camp and that's where the stairs come down and come down to the landing area. And I, I don't think you'd gain much by stuffing it in the bank, moving it over to the right and pushing it back. I don't, I don't think you'd gain much. The only thing you may gain is it would still be at the same line in the back, but the contour of the lake kinda goes out a little bit there.
What about the septic?
That's a new one, new septic. Compared to what's there now, it's just a.
They're gonna pump it up the hill. Probably's got the septic there.
Yeah, it's going past the other system and right up to the, to the road. About a hundred fifty feet back.
And where would that be in relation to the septic that's already up there for the other house?
It's gonna go right past that one, about another forty feet behind it to bring it up by the road.
So the leach fields are gonna be nowhere near each other or are they hardly near each other?
Fifty feet apart.
Why are facing the septic?
Yeah, I'm curious. Is this gonna be here on?
Cecil.
He goes to the seal tank and pumps.
What's that?
Can you just go to the seal tank and harvest that?
I don't see it.
You have a registered tank?
Yeah, right, you registered the holding tank and all that stuff.
Probably cheaper to maintain the pumps and pumping it in there all day.
Right. The state really, if you can get a system in, get a system in, is the theory in, in treated versus having, um, watched, holding tanks all over.
And that's what it, I don't know how it works here, but I mean, I have control and someone who answers with, because it was registered. You have to have the guy come in and pump. If you don't send him the certificate that's been pumped, his handy finds.
The.
Well, they can shut it right down.
Right, you're supposed to register with the pumper. If the pumper's not maintaining, it's his responsibility to call us, which has never happened.
And when, makes it a regulation where if you don't pump it, they come and they shut it right down.
Exactly.
Never happens. If they hold the hole, they run around the lake.
That's the theory, but we used to put oil on the roads and things like that. I, I think time, I hope time will change.
All right, so what do you wanna do? You wanna look? You wanna make a decision? You wanna pull off? Somebody, any something?
I don't know.
You wanna turn the cams, Joe?
I'll go alongside of that.
I'm not sure, John.
No closer than fifteen feet to the water and.
Yeah.
And I think we can get another two out of it.
And drip line trenches.
Oh, yeah.
The other line, yeah.
Do you go pictures?
Yeah, I'll take everything back.
Tyler, are you necessarily gonna see it? I know you have the.
I still feel like we could, that, just what I'm looking at for this, it could be twenty feet back. It's confusing, same, same benefits, they, the rooms in the back would be lighter if they were lit from the front, you know, because if you say, chalk the house this way, parallel to the lake, and you've got your rooms in the back there, that's a forty percent slope, those are gonna be some dark rooms. Whereas if the rooms ran front and back, you'd be able to see up to the pond from anywhere in the house, and you wouldn't be as dark shell in the back, so. I still think we could push it back to twenty if we, we could figure it to four feet. That's just from looking at this, I mean.
Sure, sure. We went to college, modern day. This is where you're taking a minute. I went to Better Back Bed, and it was a, a window, yeah? And I'm waiting for morning, I wake up, I'm saying, oh, next, the sun will come. But that window was a picture.
Uh, it was no window. This evening was a dark room, that was a dark kind of room.
How about you, lovely, what do you think, if I'm going out there or not going out there?
I don't know, it's hard to tell, but I'd like to see it, but defer.
Do you, do you not, this is the one you want there?
I'm not gonna go.
Slide a line on the ice. We could pull you into the bottom or something. Well, you know. Not sure we have.
Minimum fifteen feet, try to achieve as much as practical.
No second? Okay. So, we have motion, we no longer have motion. Back to where we were. What's the plan? We could simply set up a date to go look. And look from that.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to all attend the site, I'd be watching the site law, so that enough people land.
Take patients to shore.
Okay, I'll do, I'll make some drawings. Can I bring you lots of cranks? I don't know, we've come to any different conclusion than we've come tonight, but, you know, I look at it.
I think the only difference is increasing the fifteen to twenty.
Yeah. It's basically the same plan, turning the thing around.
I think you'd have to cut five feet off the house and shrink the house by five feet.
Well, I was just looking at, the open deck is ten feet, and then the enclosed porch is ten feet, that's twenty feet on the lefty inside here, so it'd be what, nineteen and a half feet, because it sticks into the lake six inches.
So it wasn't counting. I wasn't yelling at that. So it's forty feet now. And if it's twenty-six feet, new construction, that's fourteen feet back from the water right there, just by changing it. And like I said, I think we can get two or three feet moved back, but it's, it's gonna be a fine line from a ten foot wall foundation to the, the overpowering of the slope right above it.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of digging into the bank, I'm just.
Well, I think you've gotta dig a little bit in.
Any more than you were suggesting.
Eight foot, ten foot wall's reasonable.
So, so you're talking before about them wanting to increase by thirty percent, that would be over and above the diagram that I have here, which includes a deck and a closed porch. So this would become the whole house turned plus another thirty feet.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent, sorry, thirty percent. So, so this thing is now going to be a hundred, twenty, forty.
Twenty-six by thirty-eight.
Twenty-six by thirty-eight.
So it's a hundred thousand square feet, nine eighty-eight. Which in a lot of communities, your minimum dwelling sizes are twelve to fifteen hundred square feet.
What would be the total, would you say?
Uh, nine eighty-eight is what they proposed.
But for the ground floor here, so that they'd have like a walk-in basement and then they'd have stairs.
Yeah. Ground cover would be nine eighty-eight is what he's got proposed.
Yeah.
There a second to that?
I thought I said.
It's not a second, okay. I did the second.
Now we got a second.
Got a second? Discussion, comments?
I think we're done, all right?
What's your hesitation, Tom?
What's that?
What's your hesitation?
He never, he made the first mic. I'm, I'm gonna be president of the site law, so I can prejudge. I, my, my inclination was to accept Kenny's, uh, my whole, uh, take on these kinds of things is what, whatever we can do with the minimal site disturbance, and I, from the description of the road and from the wooden nature of it next door there, there's gonna be ample site disturbance, disturbance, no matter what they do, just to get an, an ample-sized equipment down there in the concrete truck. equipment down there in the concrete truck.
They'll probably pump from up on the street, it'll be down to 20 feet. They're not willing to put in a truck down there, I wouldn't think. But the other thing is, short-term, yeah, you don't want to dig a lot of disturbance out, but long-term is, you want to move back and re-vegetate it. So even though there was disturbance for a couple, three months, at the end of the construction period, it's relocated, it's moved back, and you, we've got a vegetated buffer, it's best as practical in front of it.
Yeah.
I just think it's, it's an odd case, because there's two houses on the one under-sized lot and asking them to...
Do we have quite a few two houses on one lot on the waterfront?
Well, I think it's, it's, we don't usually see that in a best possible location.
Right. A lot of times what they're doing is ripping them both down and building one.
Yeah.
We see that, we had one, I think they ripped three houses down and built one out of it. It was a big house, too, but the numbers are all there. You take all three, locate them into one, 30% of each one, it becomes a big house.
But in this case, that would never work anyway unless you're going to go up on the hill and do the whole thing up there, which...
Or what is the condition of a house up on the hill? Do you feel like it's one that we're going to see as a, any work done in the future?
I think it's probably vast, 100-foot zone.
Right, but I'm saying is if you could condition the building...
It's good enough that I could live in it.
Well, I could live in it, too, I don't pretend.
Thanks, but, I mean, they could come in and not be happy with what they got and want to rebuild the whole thing. These particular areas, no, they, they just fixed it up a little bit, we did the plumbing. It's a 1978 split level place.
And the second's you could condition that place and everything, it's really like, that one's going to, we're not going to see that one altered.
No.
From your opinion.
All right, and the other, and will you wish for any more than?
If to accept Ken's recommendation, that it will be at least 15 feet from the house, re-vegetation, drip lining, trenches.
You know, we have little trees that go along with that.
So I agree, some are main regional planning, and if someone...
We've got, there's a couple of local contractors, and this is one, Lake Living Consultants, also Valley. A lot of those guys do a better re-vegetation plan than I can get out of other agencies, and it's much better, it's much more detailed, and I, I think it's better than what I'm getting out of the others, so...
So are you recommending some of these private groups to do that when you, when you talk to these people? The Maddens or whoever.
Yeah, their contract will supply the drawing. If it's not detailed enough, then we'll make them get it from somebody else. Acton Shapley was getting pretty good with the drawings, too, but they close with a winner, too, so...
Yeah. All right, all in favor? All vote?
So that was 15 feet.
Was it 57?
No, I don't think so. I didn't vote, but I'm not going to, you know.
I'm tripping the thing or anything. I put in my comments.
16, sure.
It's a lot of, I mean... Did we pull off as much as I can push it back?
Talk to them. So he would put a condition, how far into the, that they don't go more than, sort of two feet into the hill to attain that, you know what I mean?
I think, I think the eight or 10-foot foundation is going to really limit how far they're going to go, but they're only going to be able to go a couple of feet.
So we're going to limit them to a 10-foot foundation wall in the rear?
Yeah, yeah. And I think they're like, you want to put that down. And you want to be a foot out of the ground, too, never mind the circle.
Right, right.
Because you'll just create the rot.
Just, just to prevent them from, from digging in the van, that's what I'm saying.
Do we have to widen the basis?
On the foundation thickness, you hope that's...
Yeah, you can either go wider with the foundation or put more steel in it, one or the other, one or two design.
All right, to number three.
This is the chair, the chair that's on there? No, it's like six feet.
So, so this diagram that you gave us, the front, which part are we talking about that becomes the new part?
That is the existing camp, and since it's too close to the road as it is, there's no place to move it back. So that would be the numbers for the setback, whatever that is from the road.
Yeah.
No closer than...
24, I think it is.
And the water?
60.
60?
Hmm.
So at least this one's got a little bit of plenty.
But this, what is this, deck?
No, it must be, oh, it's one of the, they did one of the pictures, it's one of those elves.
Yeah. Bathroom addition, it looks like.
All right, so, so this, this rect, it's a whole thing, it's a rectangle?
Yeah.
What's, what's the proposal?
Rebuilding the same footprint. So when they go to do the 30%, they would just be able to only expand left or right. No closer to the road, no closer to the lake.
Some of those trees have to come down?
Uh, they can remove the trees. The ones on the waterfront wouldn't have to, and if they did remove, without maintaining the points that they have, they'd have to replant four of them. And when you're replanting, it's a two-inch diameter tree at chest height, so two or three hundred dollars trees, so, and if you've got to put four of those in, you're looking at a thousand dollars replanting to remove one, plus the cost of removing it, so...
About $500 per tree or more.
Yeah, this is a $1,000 tree, yeah. Plus a thousand, you know, you're talking $2,000 a tree to cut it. So then, really, the camp problem is to take the tree down. Yeah, this is...
It's a pump, number one. The two of them is so small, they can shake hands, you may still need all these on the front.
Oh, yeah.
Who's the, uh... This is ridiculous.
See, he can say that, I can't.
You're probably the same, Tom, actually.
I see just some emails saying...
Sure.
All right, so what are you going to do?
But their, their septic is going to be redone, or is...
They have a current septic that meets the state guidelines, but they got to pull it out, they got to redo it all. State guidelines start in 1974, so your teater in a system that can be 30, 40 years old and still is adequate, but when somebody's ripping down, rebuilding, most of them want to replace a septic at the same time, too. Problem with loom pond is you've got so many backlots, so when you go to put the septic between the house and the road, if there are wells, and that was the problem with the pages, too, they had so many wells across the street, and it's really hard to find the wells, especially this time of year, is where they are and really locate them, but...
Do you have any notices, do you have to check, check the system before you can sell the house?
Yeah. No. Mostly I'm doing inspection for, they can make a lot of tests out of that.
Whether it was a safety problem in Massachusetts, or at least on the Cape.
Yeah.
You only can see this?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so what do I do?
It's really all Ken does.
Yeah, yeah, there's really no place to put it.
Ken, just so we understand, the smaller L as designated within that rectangle there is a 30% expansion?
So what we're going to point is that little L?
Basically, 30% of not much is not much.
Correct.
But they would gain from the pavement underneath, so...
I don't think I'm motionally accept Kenny's recommendation.
Second? Any other comments? Last one?
All the 24 feet things to do like that?
Yep.
All in favor? We good, as far as you're concerned?
Yep.
All right. I had March pointing, where it means really just to remind everybody that Tom's in charge. So, don't get hurt again.
Smaller, a little bit easier?
Yeah. How about, um, comments from you, Ken? Close it down, all business comments?
Code enforcement.
Enjoying vacation.
I will.
So now we'll have two bits on the website for the planning board.
That's right.
Unless you guys got together and watched it at the same time.
I know, I think it's a big state. You want to talk about this before we go?
I have no knowledge of what it is.
All right.
I thought it's a little different than what I thought it was.
Okay.
Supposed to work on, on, June 30th, they're going to, to the Mediterranean, and every time I look, it's night, they're going or something else, I'm going turkey.
Yeah.
So I'm like, why do you want to go here? So I buy all new shirts with nothing on it that says USA or any of these. Put it on in Japanese or something. March, you can get away from her.
Why are you going there?
I don't want my son to bring us.
So he's banned, but that's why I'm going.
So while I'm like, action plan that's coming around right now...
Do you want to hand these out?
It, it's up to you. I didn't have any binders for them. I will punch them and bind them if you want me to, or you can have them.
Teddy's already probably got a head on the block here for this.
I had no idea what this was.
I have, yeah.
Should we keep the bottom, the clips?
Yeah.
That would be your call.
This is, Fred, would you just read the first, uh...
There's eight elements in there.
Bob's expecting a full one. Yeah, and weekly updates, questions, and why is your joke, it's in the middle of someplace?
If you were just looking at the table, it's almost in the front of your wall, if you just take a stack drill, um, it's 407, maybe, oh no, wait a minute, excuse me.
There's 389 pages there.
Oh, maybe 380 pages.
Sure might last a while. I like to watch Don Fu's Law.
Make sure that oxygen's going.
It's got breathed out, he got it.
All right, who else?
Thank you, Brendan.
You want to share it with the jerk?
I'll second that, second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.